This is the county board supervisor meeting. It is Thursday, March 27th at the time this floor P M. Four supervisors present with Supervisor Plummer of District, four absent. We also have C E O Dave Ricker, County Council Joseph Farmer, and we put the board in front of me Stephanie Blankenship. We encourage those wishing to participate in public comment will have speaker request cards submitted to clerk and board in the tray designated down by the clerk to the right. All speaker request cards must be submitted by clerk before public comment for item R one begins. With that, I will ask you all to please stand with the leaders, let my supervisor tell you.
Please join me in the board.
I am with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know many have heard the comment before supervisor meetings that it's something to have Chris Kelsner lead the pledge behind you from his voice coming down. It was better. So with that, Ms. Fugit, if you'd like to come up. This is R one, today's agenda item has one issue on it. It is the county clerk registered voters appointment. I'll have process. There's not only to be an appointment today. Ms. Fugit.
Good afternoon, Chair. I am the Board of Montana County Director of Support Services. In line with the current incumbent for the nation room Tom Toller, we're here to discuss the options available for the board to fill vacancy. However, in section two, five, three, oh, four, rise the workshop filled by appointment of vacancy that occurs in elected offices. The appointee with the board's superiors would hold the position who would remain through the unexpected term. Similar vacancies have occurred in the past in the position of county clerk R O B in twenty twenty-four, district attorney twenty seventeen, honor of the controller, and sheriff coroner in the past, and those offices were similarly filled by amendment of the board of supervisors. However, the code does not specify how the appointment shall be made or any formal procedures that must be used in doing so. The only question that comes up that is in discuss at length at various times is whether or not special election can be helped. The government co-section shared on the previous slide provides that the vacancy be filled by appointment, but does not identify the options, any options available for election even of vacancy. Through the recent measure to be filled in November twenty twenty-four, which have amended the statute down to charge us to battling to allow them to the position to be filled by special election. There is one exception provided in government code which applies only under certain circumstances, which do not apply to this, to this particular vacancy where Mr. Toller is expected to resign in the middle of his term. The person elected shall take the remainder of the term, which will begin on first Monday after January first to begin receiving the election. As to whether or not we can leave the position vacant, there's no time frame specified in government code. It just states the, the attorney general is appointed, it must be within a reasonable time frame and inaction is not authorized by the statute. Options available for appointment are either to have the board direct an appointment of specific individuals to fill vacancy or see recruits to fill the position. The first option, the board can direct staff ordering back any future day of board item that would designate a specific individual to fill the position. With that, it would require also a waiver of the county personnel rules which indicate that department positions be filled on the basis of fair and open competition. Examples of direct appointments to elected positions about working are probably short to the outer control of position in twenty twenty-one and Ike Johnson to sheriff former in twenty twenty-four. The second option is available to direct staff to open recruitment to the position and make appointment following competitive recruitment process. If selected, that will require various input from this board as to how that process will be, will be played out, and we'll discuss that further in the slides that will follow. Other positions that were filled following a recruitment are a recruitment for Tom Toller in twenty twenty-four, Eric Gregory in twenty nineteen, and Stephen Burditt in twenty seventeen. We're going to go through the recruitment process, and I will discuss the various things that were related from the board. In general, this is an overview of that process. It will, it will identifying the application and advertisement period, identifying the process and individuals to conduct screening of applications, discussing any process that would be held, and then conditional offer in background of the selected individual to be followed by an order by the board supervisor. The advertisement period is subject to input by the board. If the recruitment is the option selected by this board typically to an executive level recruitment, we recommend four weeks. There have been times where we have our reports for both short and longer times depending on the direction. Regardless of linked advertisement period, we would employ various advertisement methods such as direct contact to individuals who are identified who are online recruitment system, as well as posting online through C S A, National Association of Counties, and other job boards relating to this position. These are the minimum statutory requirements for the position, which provide that the appointee must be a voter of Shasta County at the time of appointment, that the appointee shall not act as a clerk or lawyer in any election agency. That said, the board can direct staff to screen to minimum qualifications that they identify. This could be above and beyond the statutory requirements. One option that has been used in the past is to identify the ad hoc committee of the board of supervisors to conduct screening coordination with personnel and identify the top candidates who will move forward to the end of the process. The minimum qualification boards will be used in the screening process. Just an example of minimum qualifications that have been identified in other counties as potential criteria to fill this position are to have a bachelor's degree in public administration, business administration related field, and four years of experience managing elections administration or accounting functions within well-executed organization, and allowing a substitution of education or experience or innovation. This is just an example. The board can direct the minimum qualification board as well as who will conduct the screening Those candidates who pass the screening process would be invited to participate in an interview process. The interview process can be managed in any number of ways. Two common options we have seen in the past are to first conduct an initial interview with ad hoc committee identified by the board, and then we can put the top candidates through the board for open session interviews. The second option, an option used in the last report is to have all candidates to pass the initial screening process, brought forward for open session interviews. Upon completion of the interviews of the board, we just need the board making an offer to one of those candidates supporting the motion and provide version to extend a conditional offer to the top candidate contingent on the background investigation. The starting position is established at twelve thousand seven hundred P six one fifty all of the salary set at a platinum now, there is no salary. At that point, after official authorization made, the board can direct staff to conduct background investigation, including live scan, review of work history, contacts with preferences in the work. Ultimately, the board can also direct staff to give consultants to do an investigative background. As this appointment would be to an elected vacancy is recommended that the board supervisors designate the C E O of Support Services to review, complete the background, make recommendations to the board as to whether or not to, if there are moving stars, sleep on an item, then proceed. Otherwise, the second will turn to the board to seek direction as to the next candidate to invite the board to position. This is an estimating of timeline should the board direct staff the process of recruitment. And clearly, it's always very old based upon a given direction. Once the date is finalized, we would advertise these dates on any job flyer and throughout the application process. If this recruitment process is not completed prior to the Department of the Department of the position who remain vacant and still action is taken by the board to appoint a successor. In the interim, if asked and then action taken otherwise, the assistant county clerk or maybe Q and R associate group will become the acting department head. There would be no additional compensation for the board during this time as traditional looking at tasks will be applied to elected positions. So just to recap, another little while of information, the basis of the information I'm seeking from the board today through this meeting, first and foremost, whether the board is directing a recruitment or a direct appointment. And then if a recruitment is the direction, who will be conducting that screening? As well as what will be the screening criteria to be used, and whether any additional minimum qualification will be applied above and beyond that for minimum requirements. Regarding the screening process, and the ad hoc committee to be assigned to conduct that screening, that is the direction provided, there are many different approaches that could be taken as far as how this can be done, and that either the last referendum did, one individual member of that ad hoc committee could elect to advance someone to the next second process, he could take an order decision of the ad hoc committee, or that committee review is of minimum qualifications, so there's already options. The interview process, as a reminder, the common structures, I either have an ad hoc committee with an initial interview, and identify top candidates to be interviewed in open session, or all screened in candidates to do the open session interviews. Interview materials and questions, we look to obtain direction for the personnel department and C E O and the ad hoc committee to approve the interview questions and materials for open session interviews to avoid having to bring this back to the table at a later date. And then last, providing feedback regarding the timeline. If there are, my ask would also be that the board operates the C E O to make the discussion that we did. Outside of these items, the board could force provide other direction, and while I realize this is a lot to discuss and to, to take on, if we can really try to find a solution in the process now, it will void us having to bring this back multiple times. In the prior screening process, we brought this back three times prior to the open session interviews. So I am happy to help state any questions and or discuss the consequences last time.
Thank you, Director Fugit. So I always start the conversation off before we come to the public comment. I think any process of having this done publicly, and I didn't miss speaker because the faculty agenda set says consider options for like a vacancy for coming for their votes. So when I said we're not making appointment today, I don't actually have that power if, unless there's a motion up here. But my intention is for this to be about the separate process we learned from the last time, and hence this is why measure Q is still important, because I really thought this needs to go to the voters, but many people didn't like that. So we're going to go through this process again. What I would recommend is we post the job tomorrow, and I'm not making this promotion right now, I'm just talking to you. I think we post the job tomorrow, we let it run for roughly three weeks, close on the twentieth. I'm going to bring board the motion for myself and Supervisor Plummer on an ad hoc that will do a screening process. We would call for interviews then, we meet the twenty-first, and then do a open interview process on what I'm thinking will be April thirtieth. That picks up a new window, I believe. Minimum qualifications, P A related managerial or leadership experience, and then that's, that would be the conversation start. What I don't want to do is I don't personally, I don't think we interview ten or four people. I think the ad hoc committee could get down to three or four, maybe five tops, and go for that.
Was that a motion?
Well, it's more of a conversation, because I, yeah, I mean, I would like to have some other input. Supervisor Long, Supervisor Hartman, you guys, Supervisor Kelsey, I've been through this, so.
Yeah, personally, I'd like to see if, I don't want to impose on staff, I'd like to see if that needed to be quicker, but would shoot for the thirteenth would that be even vocal on them?
And one of these two is what I realized from last time, and I've been passed effective as well, but if you appoint a department head not to the elective office position, but if a person does that job for two or three or four months, they're not compensated anymore, and I don't think that's okay. And I worked really, really hard to try and get around that for our assistant R O B last time when Captain Garland Allen left office for essentially three or four months. And so that's one of the urgencies for me to get this, get this filled.
Chair, I don't see a queue here.
I just realized that.
You just have to cut in.
Yeah.
I think the first question you should decide is appointment versus recruitment, then we can proceed to the next step if we get that far. So do we want discussion among the board among, or do we all have our thoughts on that?
I'm sure we all have our thoughts on that, but there's a motion.
Okay, I will make a motion that we do a recruitment process.
I would say that. Yeah? Okay. We will be taking public comment before taking any votes, but, okay, so, I mean, is there Supervisor, is there anything you want to add about any of this? Because what I want is many of you here, public comment, I'm sharing the speaker request cards we have, all this isn't about the process. So if you're going to come in, you have your two minutes, you can say whatever you'd like as it relates to R one, but I'm just trying to make sure everybody understands, this is a, because what's happened in the past, to my knowledge, is all this stuff happens behind closed doors, but we're going to do it publicly once again. I think that's important. So if you're going to come in and campaign for something, I would rather hear personally than maybe everyone else. If you don't like the process, tell us your thoughts and solutions about the process, not about a candidate or a specific individual or a political ideology. I really care more about the process. I would want to hear input about the process, because that's what we're voting on today.
I would agree with that.
Good day. All right, with that, I think Supervisor Kelsey.
Well, no, I was going to say, and I'm with you, Alan, I think we should do the recruitment also, we could do okay with pushing it to the thirteenth rather than the point. The sooner the better, in my opinion, but.
Oh, you mean, you mean closing the front on the thirteenth.
Right.
I think, Ms. Fugit, could you back up the slides? I think.
In the slide, it was recommended the point, but that's why I asked her, it would be not a podium period of moving to thirteen.
Yeah, the period was three twenty to four twenty.
Yeah, I mean, I, I personally, I mean, what's, what's important to me is the, you know, I was looking at, just looking at my calendar, I was looking at like April thirtieth to May second, somewhere in there, having a special, a special meeting with interviews the open session, which would be to the week of April twenty-seventh. But I mean, because my thing Supervisor Kelsey is if we did the, if we did the screening and we closed on the thirteenth, and we still did interviews on the thirtieth, we might as well recruit for one more week.
Well, all that would be pushed back. Correct, Michael?
Yeah, the limitation that we have is that there is a new schedule for board meeting outside of the thirteenth.
We certainly know we can call emergency one. We heard that.
Yeah, and, and I know that, I think there's two supervisors gone the week of the twenty, the twenty, once it's the twenty-fourth.
Are either one of you, you or Plummer?
One of us, me, yeah. I mean, Supervisor Long, do you care if it's a shorter, do you care if it's a shorter? What would, what would, how about this, I'm asking you, Supervisor Long, would you prefer two or three?
Well, I would say generally a three would be, would be preferable, however, we could do that to accommodate time if, if staff feels that that is sufficient to get this process done on their perspective, I don't want it.
Another concern about the same frame to get the screening and interviews done, really the shorter you go on that timeframe, though, then the less time it's too big that we're out there trying to get. So my concern is less about that and more about just how long we can advertise.
So we're, we're talking two weeks versus three. What's not preferred, do you think?
I think two.
Two.
I can live up to.
I think we're going to, we're going to get everything.
I'm going to go with this, it's good stuff.
Well, I think you're going to try to, you know, narrow it down to four or five, and I think those four or five are just persons in there, so I mean.
Just give them a little more time.
And just to be clear.
How do we spend some more time? Two weeks, not get all your nomination, your candidates, two weeks, now you got a little more time to process. Supervisor C E O.
Mr. Chairman, I would like you to at least consider that, yeah, we're, yeah, we're actually in chambers, it's somewhat challenging, so I would request that you at least consider what our calendar looks like to try to make it work as best as possible.
Well, we're not, we're not, we're talking about the recruitment period, not the actual meeting. The meeting will be April, earlier through May second, I believe, this way. Ms. Blankenship.
Thank you, Chair. So one thing that I have done in anticipation of agreeing during the week of April twenty-seventh by which chapter we partners to hold meetings within their chambers, and as of right now, I've already gotten confirmation that the venue is available at the City of Chautauqua. All other locations are not available for the twenty-ninth, the first, or the second. But in, you know, to do with that, I can certainly look if the week prior to that, but it would be dependent on whether location was available.
So, okay, so I think the week of, the week of the, so if we did, Supervisor Long, so do you, do you want the recruitment to be, I, I was trying to give it a little bit more time. Are we saying we're trying to move the order past us? Or just strictly the recruitment?
Well, I, I, go ahead, Chair. My biggest concern was the impact on staff if he was all done, but that's not an issue. I think we can get it done by the thirteenth.
Have the recruitment done by the thirteenth?
Correct.
So then what we would do is we would take the week of the fourteenth, then to screen, to screen applicants, the week of the fourteenth, and then, and then have the interviews on the thirtieth, or the second, somewhere in there. And that was your schedule, Supervisor Long and Kelsey.
Well, and then, and your schedule, so the thirtieth, right, is the only option you have right now?
That is the only option, but again, I only looked at that one week. So if we're moving it up and I can look at the week prior to that, I can certainly do that.
It won't be the week of that, the twenty-first.
When did we have the, how many?
So the week of this week, the only date that's available for us to have a legitimate location is that.
And that's S R T A, three of us are supposed to be there, so if that changes.
And we can move an S R T A. And when is the ledge conference? Twenty-third, oh, that's right, twenty-third, that's what it was, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth is C S A. It's all in Sacramento, right? That's what I needed, it was Sacramento. Is it the twenty-third, twenty-third to twenty-fifth, we're all supposed to be in Sacramento. So here's what I have to say, and I spent probably four hours on this yesterday, and we, I mean, this is great, because you came up with some different things, but I thought we did, if we ran, ran the recruitment to the twentieth, on the twenty-first, twenty-first and twenty-second, and ad hoc, you know, committee, I'm going to make, like I said, I'm going to make a motion Supervisor Plummer and I would, and then that would give them basically seven to ten days to call the advocates for a week of the thirty, if we could do the thirty, if. But I think all five supervisors need to be there, because I think there needs to be five votes, there needs to be a odd number.
Quickly, if I'm wrong, but during the last process that I watched, didn't each supervisor bring back a candidate?
So, so my thoughts are, we take this down to a pool of three, four, at the most five, and there's one interview on the thirtieth, those are final interviews, we pick one of those. And if you want to be on the committees of Plummer, you can, like, I'm, I'm one of them.
Okay, I would.
Okay. Matt, what do you think? He's not here.
This is what happens when he disappears.
Yeah, I know. It's, he's, he's going to get you for that, I mean, he's consulting. All right, so I think let's take public comment, again, this is about solutions of the process, not about a candidate or a person, but you have your two minutes, however you see fit, as long as it changes R one. Want to get, are you, Ms. Fugit, are you good?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Blankenship, if you want to go through.
Thank you. First up is Tiffany. After Tiffany, we have Steve Con, after Steve Don Duffett, and Laura Hogs.
Good morning, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm actually, this will be shorter than the last time. This is good that you have this meeting. I appreciate Ms. Fugit for putting up the process. My only concern is that when the screening and the recruiting happens, that the minimum criteria is met by the candidates. It seemed, and I don't need to be rude, but it seemed like it was a bit of a circus last time with the candidates that were coming forward. So I really do appreciate this. I appreciate you putting everything out front for us, and thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Con, followed by Don Duffett, followed by Laura Hogs. I do see a lot of new faces in here tonight, so I do, I just want to let everybody know that the timer does start once you approach the left and the right.
First of all, R one is consider options related to vacancy of a company could request our vote position, and consider directions to staff. I don't see why that wouldn't include also the idea of appointing an individual and considering that. I think that is included in that statement. We already went through this process about nine months ago, and we can use those, the same, the same fuck out of the prior process, because it hasn't been here, and even you, Cry, says that had Toller not gotten an option, would have appointed Joanna Francesca. So I can't think of anybody with more experience. She has done the job during the time when Captain Darling Allen was ill. She's done the job basically when Toller was ill, and also Toller was being taught by her, basically, and she, she said she thought she should have more experience. She's been through another election and basically pulled it off, most of all of this stuff by herself. So I'm not even understanding why we're going through this process. We just went through it, we're going to spend money to do it again. We could use the vulgar recruitment process, and I think it's clear that there is one outstanding individual to fill the position, probably the best in California and perhaps the best in the nation because of all the, all of the challenges that have been, she has, you know, succumbed, or not succumbed to, but, you know, survived. The printing errors prior to that, the setting up for Hannah County, and then still pulling off an election with new equipment. So I don't know how you could get anybody better than that.
I totally agree with everything Steve said, and also the first speaker that spoke. I was going to get up here and ask the board to be mindful of costs and to go through the existing list of viable candidates that we already have. It sounds to me that you're not going to do that, but I would like you to be a little bit more transparent at this time about the screening process and also about the method of reading the candidates upon the interviews. Supervisor Cry, I do appreciate that you don't want to bring the candidates back for a second interview. That was a very cumbersome process, and let's put forward only fully qualified candidates this time. Thank you.
Laura Hogs, and David Halligan, after David, Jeff Porter.
Good evening, Board. I would just like to say that we need to look at the qualities of the next R O B, and I highly discourage you from, you know, considering Joanna Francesca. She actually seems to have cost the company a lot of money.
Needs to be respected.
And she actually, in this last election, has turned out that she hid some data that should have been published regarding the manhunt tally. The manhunt tally is what tells you about the accuracy of the.
It should be stick to R one.
And she, she hid that from us. So she's done this to. So she's done, did she, for the laws, in the Hogs trial, it was mentioned that laws were broken, out of the judgment that was efficient to overcome the out, to overturn the outcome.
Then you have no evidence.
But these, these things that happen, clerical or not, they end up costing the county a lot of money. And what's happening right now is that election servers are being denied the right to assert.
Stick to R1.
So whoever he chooses for this position has to be somebody who absolutely values the, the citizens' involvement in the election process. Citizens are meant to be involved from the start to the finish. We need to get back to precinct level, Hannah County, and as you said, if he, if he chooses as you select.
Yeah, come, she steals a mic.
You need to keep that quality in mind. We need to also keep in mind the fact that the citizens here have been mistreated horrifically by Joanna Francesca and others. So as far as the ad hoc committee, I would recommend that you have three individuals on that committee.
Yeah, that's a groundhog by ocean.
Okay, well, in that case, I, I would recommend you consider a different proposition of that. Thank you.
Followed by David Halligan, then Jeff Porter, then Steve Falter.
Good evening, Chair, Board, Laura Higginson. Did you repeat, I hope that we have our code of conduct, when people are texting and yelling and robbing and screaming, that would be just like right now, collapsing right now.
Yep.
If that'd be reiterated, maybe show some stability.
R1.
Thank you, people, always.
R1.
I am closing down, we have open recruitment, and I'm in agreement that we need to pay a deep and keen attention to those that were being application the last time, that much has changed their conduct behavior than someone, so I would ask that everyone pay attention to that, and if someone has experience, does not mean that they're not part of a swamp cronyism, so that's a fair statement. Look what happened with Jill Biden and Joe Biden. Look at them.
Hey, if you not respond, I mean, just be quiet and let people finish.
I'm having to name a person, they're already moaning, groaning, and having a hard time.
R1.
That's the point, and there's been a lot of unfortunate public opinion that this happened, of course, the media will tend into it like they almost do. I am saying, I appreciate having this week open. I do not know if other candidates from the previous one from out of state is even interested or not, in naming a person whatsoever. I'm concerned that we still have last week's order in place, and so there's a lot of interest to look at and address, and I really don't want to see Kell Taylor in Jetha County. We have done our best to get the most appropriate people that have their ethics and morals in place, and that is going to be the best way to go with ever who the ad hoc is. I hope all five of the supervisors can be a part of that. I'm not into questioning, but I don't want to have things take the long, long time, either, so balancing out. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Halligan, followed by Jeff Porter, and Judy Salter, then Christian Garnett.
Good evening, Board. I'd like to go back and look at the six, 18, 19 ROB interviews just nine months ago. Thirty-nine candidates applied, two days of interviews with question and answer periods. Day one, the top eight were given, reduced down to four for day two. Joanna Francesca, Tom Tolliver, John DeGaleon, and Trent Curtis. As the interviews concluded, there was much discussion by the supervisors on what they were supporting. One comment from Mr. Falter was his concern that Miss Francesca might not stay in the election office, but she'll be selected. Miss Francesca did stay, she was a good soldier, and she trained her new boss, Tom Tolliver. And then there was Chair Cry's comment during the session, that what he wanted to see at the end of the two interviews on the second day. His choices, I want to play to the audio.
And, uh, try and, I'm already spoken about this, so, I, I will, I will, if we don't know, we're calm.
Yeah, Chair Cry, you stated it wasn't going to be Tom selected, Tom wasn't going to be selected, and you would be supporting Joanna. Mr. Harmon, you said previously that you don't like being swing vote. Here's your chance for you, sir, for you, for someone else to be the leader, and make a motion tonight to select Miss Francesca. Ms. Beutig already spoke about a direct appointment, a direct appointment. Mr. Cry, you often speak of loyalty, and how important it is to you and the process. Here's your chance, Chair Cry, and the rest of the board, to show your loyalty to Miss Francesca at the next meeting with your vote. Do the right thing, supervisors, do the right thing.
And then we have Adam Toya.
Good evening, now, I'm going to encourage the Board to do a direct appointment out of the recruitment process. Why did the Board go through a recruitment process from just 10 months ago? We went through a very extensive and extensive process involving 38 potential applicants over two years of experience. While it was obvious to me that Joanna Francesca should have been appointed back then, given her tremendous background and experience in 16 years with the department, in the end, after all, weeding out any unqualified applicants, for two days of public interviews of the potential qualified applicants, all came down to Miss Francesca and Mr. Falter. You know, why would we have one of the top two candidates still on the list? Would we move towards a recruitment process and, and just go through everything that you went through just 10 months ago? I mean, it makes absolutely no sense. Fortunately, Mr. Tolliver turned out to be an ROB that was determined to follow the law and conduct elections within the legal, legal framework, but without Mr. Francesca there to guide him, he would have been lost and sick, and the election would never have gone off as well as it did. While there were problems, those were technical issues that had nothing to do with the competency of Miss Francesca or Mr. Tolliver. You know, she displayed tremendous public spiritedness by deciding to stay on rather than say, I'm out of here, because she wanted the process to go forward professionally. It's not going to be the same state this time if I pass. You know, let's make the obvious and the right choice to appoint directly Miss Francesca as the next ROB. There'll be an election in November of 2026, if people are unhappy about that, maybe June of 2026, I don't know when it'll occur. They can make their voices heard at that point, but for now, I'm disappointed in Miss Francesca.
I'm just going to be at that though. We went through this nine months ago, and just in the last couple of weeks, we've been having all these law enforcement meetings and talking about the need to get the budget under control. I think it's just irresponsible to spend money on this. I'm going to sleep for an appointment tonight. We have one candidate who has shown absolute flying colors. I urge you to make the appointment.
Thank you, Board. We're addressing probably one of the most sacred themes that our nation wants about in that this election is. The cost that our county has incurred already from lots of legacy of people that really understand and know their position. It has been instrumental, probably up until now. Joanna Francesca, shouldn't she be even interested in doing the job? And I have a feeling she is, has a well with legacy and knowledge, and has a seizure that is vast and nonpartisan. Joanna is a nonpartisan individual. When I asked her if she was even considering what would go on tonight, she said, you know what I'm going to do? I'm going to put my head down and I'm going to do my job. And that's her focus, and that's the kind of people that we have in Chatham County, and we can't afford to live rhythm of them on political whims. This is an opportunity to be nonpartisan or bipartisan, to save an awful lot of money, and to save what our nation is based on, which is a democratic representative government. Nonpartisan is the key to a lot to the ROB. Let's keep it that way. Let's keep an individual that knows what they're doing, knows how to do it, and is strictly nonpartisan. To do otherwise would be a shame, a mentality, and probably won't have the clue. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we can't hear who you're announcing.
Dr. Angelia, Jenny, Rich Galardo, and Susan White.
Good evening, all the supervisors. The most important qualities of the next R O B is their ability to perform a completely transparent election. We need someone who is a fighter and will do what is right by the citizens of Chatham County, fighting against tyrannical state overreach. And that's not Joanna. She was not transparent. She's the problem of Tolliver, teaching Tolliver all that she knew, which led to Tolliver to be where he is now. So, blame it on Joanna, because that's their role.
No. Then this, followed by Rich Porter, followed by three of the mics, followed by Dela Martin.
Good evening, Board. This is just a small microcosm of what you're going to see out there. You're used to a very small minority complains in your room, but there's a larger amount who listen online or out here. I'm going to tell you, they all want the same thing. We don't want you to spend time, effort, energy, and money when you have someone already there, when you can appoint and say this all the time. She, uh, I do believe the last time we had one of these, Kevin Cry asked, pretty much, how hard is this job? It must be really hard, because two people have now gone down with stress. Now, we're going to talk about that. One person hasn't, she's still there. Joanna has let it twice now, but not gotten the pain for it. She's already done the job, and she's still ticking, she's still running, she's still athletic. So so far, only one person deserves this job and can do the job efficiently, and can handle the stress of these people. I hate to tell you all this stuff about how she isn't transparent, she doesn't help them, I've been in there, when people were belligerent, when they were angry, when they weren't listening to the things she asked for, and she handled it with grace every time. There's only one thing to do here, it's appoint.
Followed by Dela Martin, followed by Dolores Bussero, then Nathan Blake.
Conversation for another day, but let's, let's make our register actually not an elected physician. First, no county is actually doing that right now, so the day don't oversee it only actually. Another day on that. You know, I knew Tom Tolliver since 2022, he's an acquaintance, I knew he'd be a good, decent man. I wish him the best, I, I wish his health comes back, but you know what, he wasn't corrupted until he got into that office. He was absolutely compromised. By whom, I don't know, I can only imagine. And now these people have uprising, because the last two elections, six, four, that's already been appointed, or yes, appointed, or recruited. And so what we need to do for now, let's do an open appointment process, because the second incumbent that elected office is actually hoarded, and she will not do the bare minimums to the right.
Followed by Dela Martin, followed by Dolores Bussero, then Nathan Blake.
I'm not saying anything, I just have to say my piece. I appreciate this open, the open attitude that you're promoting, I really do. I think it's great that we have this chance to come and speak upon this, I think it's great. I want to compliment you on that. However, I think it's time to stop the chaos, the expenditure of time and energy and staff to go ahead and go through this process again. Everybody's making a lot of sense up here about how we already know that she's done a great job, Joanna's done a great job, and any smart business or any smart agency would promote the people within that do a good job, and I, I can't believe that most of you don't feel, she's really earned her position. Thank you.
Followed by Nathan Blake, then Daniel DeWoo, I hope I said that correctly.
Good evening, Board, and, uh, I support the appointment of a person who very strongly experiences high normal standards and enhances the rule of law for oppositions in Chatham County. I agree with what was featured tonight, that Joanna Francesca is the best possible candidate for the position of ROB, and I had a lot to say here, but I only said to speak out to all of the supervisors today, I just support appointing Joanna, that's it, and I hope we will do the right thing, and not appoint someone without qualifications, but it's happened over and over with this board, with the recent practice.
Then Jim Burnett.
Well, here we are, again. The only thing with this, didn't I say, when you were interviewing those people for elections, how long was Tom Tolliver going to last? Didn't I say that? A lot of people didn't say that. Okay, so we're back to square one, but let's, let's, let's just face it, you basically already have someone that lined up, this is just a fake freaking meeting that you have to do. Your word is out, we already know, come on, Chris, you can't keep on being part of this corruption, following Cry and everybody else to bring in your people. You're not treating Joanna fair. You, you know, you need to look at the votes, and you're violating against Joanna, I'm surprised that she has applied a federal lawsuit for violating her rights to be treated equally in this decision that she's been in. And for you guys to play this game that, you know, you want solution, and Cry's saying he wants solution, he doesn't want solution, he likes chaos. How many times has he do this? And how long have you been following him every time he does this, Chris? Are you his little puppy that he just followed along with? Then you backcourt, he doesn't even know his ABCs. And then, you know, Kevin Cry talks about that, you know, he was trying to ask you for the people to have a voice. Bull, nobody trusts you, that court didn't pass, has nothing to do that we don't know what we're doing or why we voted that way.
R1.
Nobody trusts you. Now, can you go ahead and show the people how you act on people's feet? Because every time we get over the podium, we say, we're wasting our time, we're wasting time. It's our damn right, you work for us, we want Joanna, we want her to stay on the, you know, you're violating her rights. I'm telling you right now that you guys are going to look into a federal lawsuit suit. So, Cry, she's got the power.
Thank you. Followed by Barry Carroll.
And you're all going to jail.
Better old prison, all of us.
I wouldn't laugh.
All right, so just because this room's a little bit different, doesn't mean that I haven't been experiencing how this board operates for years. So I just want to cut to the, to the root of the crap here, like, all these type of decisions you guys have made in the past, as if we're actually here and you're hearing our opinions. No, you guys always make the decision beforehand, before any of this ever happens. This is all fake, like every other decision you guys have ever done, has never come from the input from us people, because you guys have your little private conversations. So what I'm guessing is you guys want to pick Patrick Jones to be the ROB. I think it's on purpose that he's even not here tonight, and you guys think you're being smart about that. Oh, hey, Patrick, don't show up, and then they don't think we're going to pick you. I know how you guys operate, I sure hope you don't do that, because if you pick Patrick Jones, he's just going to break city laws, and then go to prison for nine years like and then go to prison for nine years like Tina Peters. Or we could have not made, we could have made the same mistake you guys already made, made by not picking Joanna. She was the right choice the first time in heaven. Forward was your decision entirely. That wasn't even on the other supervisors. So the mistake that we don't have an ROE right now is all on you, buddy.
That's right.
Make the right decision this time and pick the candidate that is going to be the right candidate, that knows how to do the job, that has the experience, and don't make yourself look stupid again.
Daniel DeWoo, Jim Burnett, Gary Payrow, and Lance.
Hello. I have kind of a personal note. I'm a person that travels for work. And I travel back and forth from Idaho. And I've worked here at the jail. I've been a medical writer for years in this area. And I have a house here. But long story short, I want someone in this position who's going to support voting by mail because I'm not always available. And I want that to be true. I don't mind this process of having three or four candidates in a bridge process and compare it to 39 candidates. But also, as we've heard from several others, it seems as though we have one candidate that's very strong. So let's go to somebody that's unbelievably strong and can outweigh that and see what we have again.
Jim Burnett, followed by Gary Payrow, then Lance, and Megan Owens.
Good afternoon. I speak in favor of the recruitment process. The ROE, the ROE is not a partisan office. And the administration of our election should not be flawed along the partisan lines. Everyone should want fair and honest elections that give results everyone can trust. If there was any dispute, there should be an easy way to verify the results approved or disapproved and pursued. However, over the past 30 years, the federal and state governments surpassed many election laws. And we were told that they needed to naturally allow them to remove barriers that prevent people from voting. This premise would simply erudite an attempt to convince people that people are being denied a fundamental right. The truth was and still is that it's very easy to register their vote. In spite of that, all sorts of bad laws were voiced on us that really had the effect on many of our citizens. Something could ramp and fraud by making it easy to cheat. Our next ROE needs to be aware of this situation and not be afraid to acknowledge it publicly. For too long, the election office has been run by ideologues who willingly advocate for laws that are easier for fraud and will elevate it throughout the election process. Worse, the boards themselves have no way to know whether the election results were accurate and true. We're forced to accept the word of the ROE that everything perfectly administered and rendered this very definition or a unquestioning belief in something without requiring proof or evidence. While we don't need, or want, the Ricardo League pledges to continue running elections the same way. We need fresh data. We're forced to accept the status quo because the current election process had failed to produce accurate and reliable results. Thank you.
Megan Owens, then Julian.
Hi, dear. I'm one of the unknowns, and I respect your hard work. But with board decided a back to the Georgia's town college, she was not ready. She had a chance to prove herself in the federal election. And we found out that laws were broken and that we had a month-long suspension that almost violated a federal law in terms of getting the job. John has not done the law. I think she is a valuable asset to the, to the department. I think we should try to retain her, but I don't think she's ready. She's been ready to knock that problem that resulted in a lawsuit against the former ROE for not following this accountability. Everyone here admits that she claims it and needs not very well paid. But I think part of the problem is, part of the problem is not have strong laws. And so I would, I would urge the board to give her a strong boss. She may, she may be the right ROE in the future. I would, I would estimate that she would. But we need somebody who can promote an atmosphere, chamber, and say among the election department. I think she should have a career talk about, but we need someone who's going to improve the assurance of state standards. Our department, our ROE office, wrote state laws in the neighborhood of my election. And as a friend of yours, that is the way we need somebody who's going to create systems and processes that are going to make it easy for people to do their jobs and not just do it as I. We also need a person integrity who extends up to the rigors of the office and maybe being a friendly cooperative attitude is a tough thing and it's. And I will. So if you do, you do, you do appoint, make an open appointment. And it seems that you're leaning toward the other votes. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Lance, followed by Megan Owens, then Julian, and Patty Jelovic.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. So I know there are a lot of familiar faces who have occupied this space uncrinkly often. I am not one of them, a relatively recent arrival in Shasta County and Red. My name is Lance Sperner. Early on, I did have an opportunity, however, to work as a poll worker in a very contentious and difficult election in this county in 2020. And at that time, of course, it's been known to me too well. The office was run by Kathy Garland Allen and her very capable assistant, Miss Francesca. So look, did you find out an absence or a vacancy in this position? Normally, I would advocate for an open recruiting process. But as it turns out, such a process took place recently under your supervision and your guidance. Two excellent candidates were narrowed down for the final decision. One of those candidates occupied that office briefly and is now on. It seems both irresponsible and frankly, a violation of the history of duty for this board to even contemplate entering into another expensive, difficult, time-consuming, and contentious process when the obvious candidate remains in office and has operated competently despite any innuendo or unsubstantiated claims to the contrary. So look, the only reason is pretty clear that this board did not select Miss Francesca previously is because she felt a political test, not a test of competence or a test, in fact, of executive ability. This office, the state office in this county, is not a political segment. And for this board to treat it as if it is, is not only disgraceful, but shows disrespect to the citizens of Shasta County who deserve to be well represented in the elections that come up every two years and more frequently. So I urge you, if you are going to enter into a process that top candidate should be, a directed appointment of Jessica Francesca, Francesca to the office is already comfortably and quickly managed.
Megan Owens, followed by Julian, then Patty Jelovic, then Leslie.
So you seeing anything that I made it on? It is not an order of when a vacancy occurs to appoint to that vacancy, hire to that vacancy, the candidate that was second in line, particularly when that is the person doing the job well. And the most obvious choice for me is that you have someone else in line. However, the very people hiring you have stated publicly that you wouldn't have voted for Joanna in this position if she had more experience. Well, she had more experience. I have a concern about the appointment process you have outlined as well. Truncating the process only truncates our ability to choose the best candidate for all voters. Truncating the process for, only for advertising the job and not truncating the complete process shows that you already know who you want. Truncating the process for finding applications does not elicit confidence amongst voters that you are truly concerned for a candidate who will respect the law, who will respect the right of access committing to that access for all voters, and that you will continue to allow Shasta County voting to be free and unfettered into the future. Thank you.
Jelovic, followed by Leslie, followed by Ron Amber.
Hello. My name is Kelly LaCola. My family and I make our home in the hill. First of all, I'd like to applaud the board for making the commitment to transparency. I think that is of the highest importance here. What I'm going to say may be wrong. I know there is a recommendation to ensure that we have someone with experience. I think the minimum requirements aren't appropriate. So I would just make the recommendation that we get someone with quite a bit of experience. These things can be very complicated. And so we're lucky that we have Miss Francesca, who seems to have, you know, already done the job and recently went through the interview process. So we have to have someone like that. It sometimes can be very rare. And so, and I would just say, you're all businessmen. And I think in business, we always want people, process, and technology. And I think you know that, you know, you didn't have the best process and the best technology, but the house parts, the whole ball, we all have the right people. And so I, I would say that we've already got someone that already has a job. So I would just hope that you appoint Francesca instead of going through a lengthy process. It's huge importance to try to get someone there just to have the position built and have us around. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I'm Patty Jelovic. And I just want to say that, like many people in this room, I don't want to see another cent go towards supporting more debt for our county. It's a high and it's only a long process. You know, the recent, in the 2000 election that one of the board members, speakers talked about, there was, it was the election where Kathy Garland Allen was reelected with nearly 70% of the vote. In that single election, our current congressperson and our current president were also elected with 7% of the vote. Some of these people that talk about corruption in our election department think somehow Kathy Garland Allen was able to win the vote so she won and those other guys did too. Now, on Saturday, we had a conference. It's just, it's just crazy. At the same time, the national election was challenged in court. There were 61 court cases, 60 of which showed that there was no election by across the nation. There was a lawsuit that was sued by Dominion. She tried to sue the station and I will never call this lawsuit. They're often, they cost a billion dollars to settle for Dominion, the game Dominion. And this committee was supported majority, voted to get rid of Dominion machine, which is where the start of this amendment came from. We have a very qualified candidate and then we can vote on the new one in 2046. Thank you.
What do you mean? There's people in this room that are right. Our county has a history of wasting money. Over the last 20 or so years, our appointed officials in the ROE position, the superintendent of schools position, the Shasta County sheriff, and the district attorney's office have left midterm. It is a pattern. And they wanted to appoint somebody. They want to groom the next most qualified and then pressure those making the decision to appoint. Our county has wasted tons of money, which is why Measure Q was put forward. The same people that are complaining that we're doing this process again were the ones that shot down Measure Q, that went out and talked about it because it was something you brought to work, therefore it must be evil. So this whole process could have been even more if we, the people, got to vote for this. Unfortunately, our electeds keep putting us in positions where you have to appoint. I trust your judgment. Thank you very much.
Do you know how people vote? How do you have access to that?
Hello, board. My name is Ron. Whoever you, whoever gets appointed, we need to be able to observe. We're not allowed to observe. They shut us off. We can't even go into the ROE office. And we need to be able to observe hand counting, us to make a fair election so it's transparent. And we need to have them, whoever you appoint, they need to sign, you need to write a contract that they need to sign that says they will observe hand counting and ballots and stuff like that. You need to operate a contract. I'll help you. And it'll be a lot of work for you as well. So this is my point. Let us have our, God give us constitutional rights back. Too many men have fought and died for this right, keeping away from us, starting with our founding fathers. And I know I've made this speech before, so you're probably trying to listen to me. I'm sorry if my military attitude to my patriots offends anybody. Thank you.
Jenny, followed by Nick Warner, followed by Brian Patterson, followed by Henry Patterson.
Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
It seemed like only yesterday when the board was in the same position, the situation and the process became so polarized and hostile. And I surely hope that we can avoid that again. We all have our thoughts and our opinions. And all of them should be offered and heard and considered in a respectful manner in this cause. I hope you, as board members, will base your decision on three things. Qualifications, experience, and familiarity with the laws governing the election department. As one who has worked long hours, many days, as a poll worker in a variety of elections in Shasta County, I'm familiar with and have a very high regard for the care and diligence with which our local election department operates. I know of no other person better qualified to assume the position of Shasta County clerk and registrar of voters than Joanna Francesca. She has mindful confidence. Hope she has yours.
Thank God for President Trump. He just passed. I would like to thank for that.
Hallelujah.
The only reason we're up here is because they'll recall us, Mary Rickers. They didn't pass, they didn't win against Measure Q or we would have gone right to an election and we would have had the will to people, the majority of people. You guys didn't want that. You want somebody to appoint your representative. I would rather it was elected. As far as the mail-in ballots, though, we still have absentee ballots, buddy. So if you're, I know what you can get. No, skip to R1, please. Please. You know, there was a large percentage of us that weren't happy with transparency in the last election. And that's a direct reflection from the outcome that these people seem to want to get. My preference was for the guy from Florida, but he didn't get it. So that's the way it is. is. I'd like to suggest, when the president's going to need a recruitment, I'd like to suggest he can reach out to Bob Paulsinger and recruit him.
Please don't respond.
Well, come on, Kevin.
No, no, you can stop, they can't.
Okay. So, anyway, there's those of us who are up here wasting our money on this deal we're going through right now. Had they voted for our charter amendment or electing the vacancies in an office, we wouldn't be here, so their whining just kind of gets old. Thank you.
(applause)
Hey, Jeff, how you doing?
I'm a fire mom, full-time student. I'm also an employer in Shasta County, and I'd rather not be here, but I feel like if an average citizen is coming out and goes in your opinion, I don't know, but it seems like maybe we need to set that up, so I'm here. And as an employer, I am completely confused as to what's happening, because when we need to fill this position, we just go back to the best candidates we had the last time around, and we seek, they're still interested, we fill the position to move on. And if there's no one interested anymore, then maybe we're like, we'll sell it in. So, an appointment is just a logical decision in my mind. I don't know who Joanna Francesca, I can't even take her name, is. Probably learned a lot about her just listening, and she seems extremely powerful, because she was apparently so unqualified that she couldn't be appointed last time, get the position, but yet she was responsible for everything that went wrong. At the last election, and she corrected, um, all of her, like, senior? I don't understand. I don't understand. This is why. Okay. So...
So, why are you up there?
If she is so powerful, then she would make sense, and if that's not what's going on, then why hasn't even been, like, if she's qualified, she should be appointed. Otherwise, we need a fine qualified candidate, and at the last round, it was kind of, I followed it. It was weird. I'm just an average Joe. I don't understand everything, but this is not making sense. Let's just go back to common sense.
Thank you.
(applause) Okay, I got two minutes. All our respects to supervisors and everybody that has spoken before me, including the veterans, including the people who have kind of not the popular ideas up here. I appreciate that we can do this, and I appreciate that I can speak and share my opinion. So, I just want to say, a lot of respect to everybody. Heckling's gonna hurt, it'd be really hard to deal with if I'm super nervous. So, here's my opinion. Regardless of who you appoint or recruit, I urge you to consider the qualification for the best candidate. The best candidate in my mind should have experience, could be able to reduce costs, could be able to follow election laws, could achieve a fair election, could achieve a free election, could achieve an efficient election, should be nonpartisan, should listen to concerns from everyone for accuracy. Just because we like certain voting machines, we probably won't do stuff. Okay, so, Tom, the best candidate should not, should not follow just wins and conspiracies and anxieties relating to elections. I know those are real, and I know they're really scary, and I know it's really frustrating to feel like elections are being thrown out, but I really feel like our election process has shown time and time again to be fair. (applause) If the candidate seeks solely hand counting, it is not efficient. It is, it's easier to make fraud, it's slow and costly. Please do not subscribe to these conspiracies.
That's good.
Please, they need to be, for those who are the most qualified. If it's true that you're considering Patrick Henry Jones, I'm just saying, if it's true, I don't know where I heard this, but it's true, consider me, who has no experience in elections. But I think, thank you.
(applause) Jeff, Council on...
Sorry, I would request that you make three separate motions here. The first one would be whether to make an appointment or not. The second one would be the time on, and the third one would be that. That would be directed at school.
All right, so I'm gonna make the motion. Chair, I apologize for the NR2. We do actually have a motion and a second on the table, too, before we make, so I do ask that you...
Before we get into that, can I bring something over? Absolutely. So, I'm listening to everyone, and I'm gonna take a kind of a novel approach to this, and I didn't know originally, we're missing one board member. I did not know if we could reach a consensus as to how we would go with this, but I'm going to make a subsequent, substitute motion first, and here's my motion. I need to know one thing from Monica. She can hear. What would the cost be of this process that we're, if we do our full recruitment?
So, that has to be permanent staff time?
Or we have a straw, if we don't get it right. Yeah.
And additionally, advertising.
And what would the equivalent of staff time as an offset, if they would be doing something else? Do you have any idea how much staff time would be involved, or time?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't count, and that's just, it obviously is more extensive than the typical work business that we have, but I don't, can't really estimate.
Okay. Let me just continue with my thoughts, and then I'm gonna make a motion. I don't know how it's gonna go over with the score, but we just did a very thorough process nine months ago, and the position upon taking office, whoever that ends up being, will be a little over a year and a half, so it's not, it's not a very long time. Given the considerations of the cost, I would make a motion that we, this has nothing to do with the person that is in the office currently, I'm not making it based on that. And if we go recruitment, this board votes recruitment, then I will support that process entirely, but at this point, in order to save time, to avoid the cost, and it's a fairly short term, I'm going to make the motion to this board that we appoint the incumbent, of which is, uh, Ms. Francesca.
Hold on, but he, Council on, he made the original motion to, to, to go through recruitment, and I was making a subsequent motion. Does he either amend his original or does he, means this other move?
The, the original will stand if we get, if this one is shot down.
So, the first thing is, so we do not have an appointment on the agenda today to have a discussion and direction of staff, so the most you could do today is have staff bring back an appointment of a specific person. We wouldn't be able to make that appointment or not.
Okay, so that will be my motion, that we bring this back for discussion of the person that's already in office, in order to save time, money, and...
Your motion, your motion to the Director Long would be to bring an appointment back of who you're, who you're saying, like, leaves Joanna.
Correct.
It's not a discussion. Your motion would be that.
Correct.
So, that motion?
That's my motion.
And we got a second. Here are the most second. Move to...
And just, and just for the special, to this speaker, I'm really shocked that the whole... You guys are some of the most rude people.
No. We're constituents, buddy.
So, the people are being seen by, now I'm gonna do this publicly, because I think it has to be done, but you have speakers come on, and you wanted to move to a recruitment, which I, I think is, is what it should be, and it had twenty people, and you're just doing quick math and going through that, I mean, that's not the work of a supervisor. You do that work of staff time, you do that time, right? Let me answer that back, please.
Sure, absolutely. And I think it's positive.
Yeah, in all due respect. So, I'm listening to speakers, but that's not what's driving me. I originally wanted to avoid this entire process, going through all this, because I think we have a qualified person that's already in the job, and it's not going to be forever, it's gonna roll into the next election. So, I had made the decision that I'm not gonna push this right up front, because I didn't have a full board here, and I didn't think I'd get the vote, which I didn't get the vote. But in my conscience, I said, I need to at least offer this as an option, because maybe, maybe the rest of the board felt similarly, and then the rest of the board thought, hey, we can avoid this for a year and a half, and we can go with somebody that we just talked about nine months ago, and who is, who is, was a really serious contender down to the tube, and, and members of this current board right now had said, excellent choice. So, that's where I, I just wrestled with this, and I didn't think I'd get the vote, so I didn't bring it up, and I thought, well, we'll go for recruitment, and we can figure out the process through that. But I am interested in saving the county as much money as we can, and not having to go through this process again, when we already have a qualified person in office. So, I thought, that, that is exactly why I just thought, I have to amend it, and at least offer this in all time, because I don't get to talk to you guys, and I just want to poll and see where we are. We took a vote.
Right up front, you made a motion for recruitment.
Well, no. But you understand what I just said. If people in the audience do not respond... No, what I said was, we're missing, we're missing one, please. We're missing one member, and I didn't think that I would get a consensus or a majority vote, so I thought, okay, the recruitment process at least will open this up, and, and we will consider a number of candidates, and then really further discussion, because I didn't think I'd get a vote. And then, when I was listening to our speakers, and I was thinking about it myself, I just said, hey, I have to, I have to offer this as an option, so I'm not changing my mind. I'm gonna go along with the recruitment process, and obviously, that's where we're, we're gonna go. So, I appreciate the opportunity to weigh in, and that was just, that was just my thought, Russ, just to save time, to save a lot of money for our county, and we got somebody that's, we've got somebody that, that has the qualifications currently to do the job, so that's all I can offer. And, and I appreciate that. And Director Fugit, when we talk, I'm not asking this question, I'm just saying, conversations about this, and most of the people are actually solid, so we're not adding additional, in terms of the recruitment, I mean, I'm not looking, you're nodding, so...
Not able to do their work.
The most important thing is, we're not spending a whole bunch of money on some big campaign. We're gonna put it out there, we'll reach out to some of the other candidates that we haven't passed, letting them know we're going in. So, we have a subsequent motion on the board, or originally by Supervisor Long, second by myself. We'll take that vote, which is moving to a recruitment process. All those in favor?
I'm not questioning. So, when he made another motion, he can have both on the table, so he can make a new motion. So, he made motion for...
It died from the second.
Take that again. All those in favor, passes for O. The next, the next, now, I think we do one for the process, you want to, about, yes, the time on, so I'm gonna make a motion, okay, I can amend this, but I'm gonna make a motion that the post the job tomorrow, have to close on the twentieth, on the twenty-first, they will have, will have those applicants, they'll pair down to, we will define with interviews, and to follow on the thirtieth, with final appointment May one, roughly May thirteenth.
I would still prefer a shorter open period than that.
Okay, and then a discussion. All those in favor? Aye, aye. Passes for O. Now, let me ask one question, Council on, if, if Director Fugit, because I made it for the thirtieth, does that, did that motion, we could say, like, somewhere around the thirtieth, like, if for some reason we would make first, is that a problem?
So, I could put, if you could have your question...
Would that be included in that motion?
No, you're making that motion.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna make a motion, and then we'll allow the CEO to move those dates as he sees fit within those close parameters of the original motion.
Awesome.
We have, all those in favor? Aye. Aye, passes for O. Now, we're gonna move on. We have, we have two more, we have two more motions. One around the minimum qualifications, I would say, a BA or related managerial or leadership experience, experience in an election or ROV office or working in elections. So, honestly, this would be, I'm sorry, that's a motion. Do you want to include that time of experience, like, four years or six years? Sure, yeah, I mean, I mean, if any of that, that's pretty broad. But I'm making a positive motion. Well, last time, as we said, the minimum qualifications for the ROV, which was eighteen as a resident of the Shasta County, and, you know, so that's, that's what it was last time, so I think we want to... So, you had the four years last time? No, no, that's what I'm saying. We did the, we did the minimum requirements for the office, that's why we proposed, okay, we had...
So, he's...
I'd state to be a candidate. I'm just worried that if we, I don't want to do this, if we don't set standards for qualifications, we're gonna get underestimation. Well, we have thirty-nine asked questions, the broadest.
Does what you're reading them up?
Yeah. Okay, so, so, I mean, even with the, right there, so I would say, BA, related managerial leadership experience, and then, or, because I'm gonna ensure, our current assistant, ROV, has a, a lot of experience, so we said the minimum of these four years of elections, four years, well, yes, so that's...
Okay. All right.
All those in favor? Aye. I'm gonna make a motion that Supervisor Long and I, former ad hoc committee, and working director, we get to serene applicants, and bring this board, a pool of three to, let's say, we'll just say three or more, but less than six. I will take them all. All those in favor? Aye, aye.
Can I ask the one, the application?
Yes.
On motion for any minimum qualifications, for the four years of election experience, are you looking for any related election experience?
Yes.
Election experience in a public sector, do you...
Election experience.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then, I think, I don't think there's, I think we covered it, correct? I think we have, we have all those, and so, I don't think we did a separate Fugit with the ad hoc, that's what our selection criteria is, but I guess we can, we'll just bring forth three or five or six between us. That's all that ended up. All right. Is there anything else, Mr. Fugit?
No, Jay, that's it.
Council on, CEO right here.
No, I'm just gonna show...
Can I, sorry, apologies, but can I also ask that we get some, some authority to establish the interview process without having to bring it down with our official protection for the guys through the CEO?
That's right. Yeah, okay, so, do we need a motion for that, Council on? Remember last time, we did it, okay, so, the, how do you make the motion, then, that the ad hoc committee brings for the finalists of interviews, and the process, hold on, let's have a little discussion on it. I want to give Supervisor Long, Supervisor Harman opportunity, what we did last time. You want to talk briefly about the interview process, big one?
So, the last time, we invited any applicants to have screening to an open interview process after the first day, each supervisor was able to select the candidate to progress to date. And that, you know, that was, was invited to date two interviews. We, in advance, discussed and prepared a list of interview questions that were brought to the board, so that is part of the, the direction and the security that we've been established. established, and period of interviews, and small initiatives, the ad hoc committee, and CEO, that we would bring back.
My only question with that would be, if this screening process is going to come up with a much smaller group that advances to the first interviews, it sounds like, are we going to have five bring back to day two, or are we gonna have, are we gonna have, is there gonna be five that we would invite back to day two, or is it gonna be five? No, there won't be a day two. We're gonna, you and I are gonna pair it down to three to five, no, I only said no more than six, just because, I wanna, I, you know, I wanna give us that flexibility in case we do, like, you said a hundred. So, instead of, each supervisor picking, it'll probably be you and me picking. No, no, you and I are gonna pick. Right. We're gonna pick the three to five roughly people. Yeah, okay. And then, and then this board, with Supervisor Long, will pick one of those on that one day, we'll have one day, and my thoughts are, all of us, we would just, we have an open interview, we can schedule maybe four or five minutes with each applicant, some questions we want to ask, and just do it that way.
Perfect.
So we would schedule roughly thirty to forty-five minutes for each applicant, and knock it out on April thirtieth or something. Is that good, Ms. Fugit?
Yes.
Yeah, Supervisor Long, I appreciate you, I really do. All right, anything else?
He has a second. That motion.
Oh, that's right, that's a motion, sorry. Hold on a second, Supervisor Long, Supervisor Long, second, all those in favor, aye, passes for O. Explain to you, cover everything, Matt. Speaker Fugit? Council on, CEO right here, put that to speed, turn.